Welcome to On the Corner of Main Street, presented by Plaza Hotel and Casino in downtown Las Vegas. Here is Plaza CEO Jonathan Jossel, Gary Vickery, and I'm your host Lisa Melmed. Today, we have the honor of being joined by Las Vegas City Councilman Cedric Creer. Welcome to On the Corner of Main Street.
One Main Street, the best address in the history of Las Vegas.
Agreed.
Yeah, and that's why the podcast is called On the Corner of Main Street. It's physically where we're located and just to rehash about my favorite lyric from a Killer song, which begins on the corner of Main Street, which is how the name came to be.
How does that song go?
I'm not singing.
Are you gonna sing it for me?
No, I heard it live last week. Actually, it was very good.
Oh, I was, I heard the show was amazing.
Amazing. I mean, I-
T-Mobile?
At T-Mobile, yeah. I feel a little bad saying amazing because I'm like a fan.
Right, right.
I'm a fan. I'm gonna enjoy it and they could do anything and I would enjoy their show. But people loved it and it felt like a homecoming to many people that were there. They also like to see them in another city or another market is different, but to see them live in Las Vegas.
Yeah.
It's pretty cool.
Well, it's their home.
It is their home. But you know, look, I haven't seen their concert currently. I've seen them at the Shaquille O'Neal Foundation event we had last year to raise dollars for underserved communities like ours in War V and I was in Atlanta. And they put on a hell of a show. I think they did like four songs and they were just, you could feel the energy and the passion that they have. You know, you know about laws of attraction, that vibe you give off is a vibe that you get back.
That's right.
They give off this vibe like, look, man, we're in Vegas.
That's right.
This is our home and you can feel it.
And wherever he goes, Brandon, the lead singer, wherever he goes, he says, "We're the killers by way of fabulous Las Vegas," something to that effect.
Yeah.
But it's different when you're in Las Vegas. You know, I've heard him say it in London, no one, no one cares.
I have pills, I have pills.
Uh, but in, uh, and what's cool, I guess, is he's like kind of a quiet, unassuming guy, but he gets on stage and he's got this persona, which is like crazy.
You know who I saw this summer? And I'm gonna tell you where. Did I tell you?
Go on now.
I saw Ed Sheeran.
Okay.
At Wembley.
Oh, wow.
This summer.
That's cool.
How about that?
That's great. Wow. He must be, it must have been packed.
It was absolutely packed. My first time at Wembley and to see him there. Look, here's a guy that literally, he positioned his stage. He had a huge stage, huge production. And he is basically onstage by himself, him and a guitar at all of-
Yeah, yeah, exactly right.
Right.
Just on his own. I saw him at T-Mobile and he just had his-
Yeah.
And the guitar.
Right. And you sit back and you're gonna move the crowd and move this, 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 this whole group of individuals with just him on stage.
Yeah.
But he did a great job.
His music makes you move.
His music makes you move. He does an amazing job and it was quite the experience for me.
All right, so, so hold on. We've gone off on a tangent. You talk about music.
Yeah.
But, but a good conversation-
I thought we were gonna talk about the Premier League.
Good. We're getting onto the Premier League. Premier League's coming up shortly. A good conversation. What's 4-0?
My Arsenal Gunners, 4-0, baby.
I think they're, I think they're 5-0.
5-0.
They're 5-0.
On Sunday morning to Manchester United.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, big- Practice game.
But that's if, that's if Ronaldo stays. I hear he's gonna, they talking about trading him, right?
Yeah, well, they can't now because-
I hear he's coming out here to be a host here at the Plaza.
I would take, I would take him as a casino host.
Are you trading your director of hotel and marketing for Ronaldo to be a host?
Absolutely. I'd take his 400 million Instagram followers.
I have a no trade clause.
You have a no trade clause?
Yeah, I have a no trade.
Okay, perfect.
He's got 400 million more followers than you guys. 462 million more followers.
This podcast is growing.
But, but hold on, hold on, hold on. Today's a big day because we've had, um, on our podcast, we've had a former mayor in Oscar. We've had a current mayor in Carolyn be guest on our podcast, Mrs. Mayor, and today we have a future mayor.
There we go. That's the plan.
On our podcast. Cedric, welcome to our podcast.
Thank you.
This is a very informal chat.
Yeah.
It started out with no real agenda or purpose, but we've grown to 80-something episodes, 81 episodes, and we're still here doing this. So, so we thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me. Um, it's pretty impressive that you guys have, you know, built this up. I say that podcast is the medium of now of how you get information out. And so many people subscribe to podcasts and listen from all over the world. I remember just a short few years ago, a friend of mine who lives here, her name is Lacey Erceoli, started a podcast community. She used to work with me when I was the director of marketing for Station Casinos for a number of years and she was my advertising person. She was the first person to come to me years ago talking about podcasts. And I did one in my office with her and didn't really know what it was. And she grew that and she started the Podcast Association here in town. And, you know, to see the number of celebrities, you see how many listeners that people have from all over the world, um, it is, it is quite impressive. And it, I, I say it's the medium of the future, but it's the medium of now.
So, so what's cool is we do this one for fun. Uh, we started this just before the pandemic and it found, turned out to be a great way to communicate with people during the shutdown when there was no casinos open. And then we enjoyed it and we kept doing it. And the, and the feedback from people has been amazing to hear people actually listen to it. Then they come down here, uh, they check out the Plaza or anywhere downtown. We talk, we have other casino owners downtown. We have other restaurateurs downtown. We have people from the Strip. It's all about talking about Las Vegas, the history, and obviously having a future mayor couldn't be a better. So we'll refer to him as future mayor from the-
Future mayor, okay. I, I, I like that.
How's, how's the race going? How's the running going?
The race is going extremely well. Uh, my race is not into 2024. Carolyn Goodman is termed out in 2024 and I knew there was gonna be an open seat. And with an open seat, you know, a lot of people are gonna get in the race. And what I wanted to do is to just take away the conversation. I wonder who's running? Is he running? Who's running? And I said, no, I'm, I'm running. And we started last March, just sort of fundraising. We have to raise a lot of dollars to get our message out. And it's been going overwhelmingly successful. You know, you put yourself out there, you never know what you're gonna get back, right? You could say you're gonna run.
Isn't it stressful?
Well, you know, this will be my sixth campaign that I've run, right? I ran for the State Senate in '04. I lost to Congressman Horford, who went on to be Congressman. I won for the Board of Regents in 2006. Re-elected in 2006. I could currently serve, only person ever could currently serve on the Board of Regents as well as on the Las Vegas Planning Commission for two years. I won the special election, took office in April 18th of 2018, won the currency, and I've been serving now for four and a half years. So, you know, stressful is, is, we, we do a lot. We manage a lot. But at the end of the day, I think I'm very good at what I do. Have a great team. The city team was amazing and we are accomplishing a lot of good things. It's just a lot of fun actually to see the progress that we're making. I'm a person that, um, don't, I, I don't believe you just sit in office and don't get anything done. Right? Um, although we never do this to sort of pat ourselves on the back, what have we done? You have to look at yourself in the mirror and say, what did I accomplish in the time that I'm here? Because we're all in these positions. We're blessed to serve in these positions for a finite amount of time. What are you gonna do to make a difference?
How long is the term for councilmen?
It's four years. Yeah, it's four years, but I served a year and a half on the special election. And then the legislature wanted to get municipal elections, city elections, on even years because they thought that the turnout for odd years was good. And so to get everybody on the same track, the mayor got an extra year of her term and I got an extra year of my term of city council.
You, you say four years or five years now for this particular one, but you have three terms of that.
You, you can serve in office for a total of 12 years, right? But, um, so when I do take over as mayor, I'll be able to serve two years, two terms, two four-year terms.
Why only two?
Well, because they, it's interesting. In Henderson, they, they, someone went up and said, look, I was on city council. I'm running for mayor. I should be able to serve a new 12-year term. But, uh, the law stated that since you served on council, that time served on council, and since the mayor sits on council, then that goes towards your term.
Oh, wow.
For that, which I-
So if, so if somebody else comes in new as mayor, they get three full terms.
They get, they get three full terms.
You're only gonna get two full terms.
I'm only gonna get two full terms, yeah. Which, which I kinda beg to differ. I mean, technically, city council persons in Las Vegas are a part-time position, even though we all know it's a full-time position. And the mayor serves at large in a full-time position. And I, I see where they're coming from with actually being on council, yes. And our mayor votes. Many cities' mayors sit on council in a, you know, just sort of a posturing, um, well, position because they don't vote. The mayor actually votes, so they, they view it like that. I, I could, I can make a case for both sides.
It's, uh, interesting is that Carolyn, the mayor, is gonna beat Oscar by one year now. You're gonna have 25-year of Goodman, Oscar for 12, and now Carolyn for 13, but she's gonna be mayor for one year longer because of the change that Cedric-
Yeah.
Mentioned, so that's really-
And she loves mentioning that.
It's really pissed off Oscar.
Yeah, well, you know, look, who knows? He might run in 2024 and serve one year.
Oh, oh, that's funny.
I think I'll win, but he just, he just might come out and say, I'm gonna run. I'm only gonna, he's just funny. I'm only gonna serve for one year only, just so I could tie my wife.
So, so has anybody else declared that they're running?
Not yet. Not yet. Well, no, it's not necessarily too early. Um, and I knew this. With an open seat, you're gonna get a number of people who are gonna get in, right? You're gonna have people who are founded and unfounded. Somebody's gonna walk into the clerk's office and say, hey, I wanna run for mayor, pay my hundred dollars, and there you go. So there will be a competitive race. Nobody, as of yet, has gotten in. You know, we've done a great job this past year and a half of garnering early support from a wide variety of people, not just industry people, but like, um, people who are on the back of garbage trucks, people who are corporate executives in the C suites have said, "We're happy to see you running. Uh, we think it's great that you're running. We wanna support you. We're gonna be here today. We'll be here tomorrow and we'll be with you throughout the whole race."
That's great.
Yeah, you know, look, we're, we're gonna make history. I'll be the first Vegas-born mayor in the history of our city.
Oh, no way.
Yeah, how about that? And then I'll be the first African-American mayor to serve in our, in our great city. I literally, you know, born and raised here. I, I live in a house that I grew up in, which is about five minutes from downtown corridor, right near Historic West Side. And so I have a long, rich history within our great city.
Well, tell us about your history because you mentioned that you were a casino, a marketing director in the casino space, so, and now you're in politics. So what's your background? Where are you from? How to get started?
Yeah, how do you, how does that work out, right? So I have a, I have a degree in microbiology. I have a minor in chemistry. I own an advertising firm, a billboard company. I'm an investor. I have a restaurant group. I'm on a board of a bank. I serve as a city councilman. And so it just shows you-
What a resume.
Yeah, well, it shows you that, uh, you know, life's journey is not certain. You never know what you're gonna be doing. And I always say that. You gotta have the gut to go down and live the journey you're supposed to live. And I was, you know, blessed to serve in, uh, as the director of marketing for a few properties. Started out dealing blackjack on graveyard at Palace Station, right?
You went to dealer school?
I went to dealer school.
I love dealer school. I recommend everyone go to dealer school. If you wanna work in this industry, dealer school.
Yeah, I went to dealer school and I, you know, show up at 2:30 for a 3 o'clock AM shift. And I, I did that for about a year. And dealt blackjack, pai gow, uh, the wheel. Learned how to, on my breaks, I learned how to deal dice. And so I did that for a while, about a year. Then I went from there, worked over in the racing sports book. And I wrote tickets for a while, worked with the managers there and setting lines. I was when each property would set their own lines. Um, and so we would set the lines and saw how that worked. I worked under a house, I mean, on the, on the race and the sports side. Left there and went to go work in the slot department. Started our selling change. I had my outfit.
By the way, you just said something that-
Yeah.
People probably don't know in its history, but it's pretty cool. They used to separate and the only place I know that still does it is the South Point.
Yeah, right.
They have a race room and they have a sports side.
Right, absolutely right.
Two separate books.
Yeah, yeah.
You just made a reference that probably nowadays, everything's combined.
Right.
Or they've gotten rid of a race. I mean, Circa doesn't do horses. William Hill's getting rid of a lot of the horses. But a lot of papers, in the old days, it was separate.
It was, it was. And, and look, uh, there were distinct characters who bet sports and distinct characters that bet race.
Wow, interesting.
And there was different lingo that went into both of them, right? And if you were writing tickets and someone was coming up to make a bet and they said, you know, give me a, you know, four, six, eight round robin, like you gotta know what it'd be like. And if you were sitting there questioning him, it would, all hell would break loose. Like, like who in the hell is this dude? Get this dude out of here. Like you had to know what was going on. Yeah, and, and it was very distinctive. Uh, and, and it was great. Uh, the people that wrote tickets-
Where did you write them?
At Palace Station.
Okay.
Yeah, at Palace Station. And I, I did that for a while. Like I said, I left there. I went to go work in the slot department. Started out selling change. I had my little outfit on. I had my little bowtie. And this was back in the day when they had to change cards and you'd go around and you would give change to folk. Uh, then I did that for a little bit, worked in a carousel as well. And then I went and worked as a floor person.
Carousel, meaning?
So, yeah, so what's a carousel? So, you know, it used to be you had, uh, slot banks. And people say it was a slot bank of 12 games and it was a rectangular shape. You would be in, on, in the middle of the carousel and you would be there looking over the games, giving change to that particular bank of slots that was there. And, uh, so you would, you would just stand there and you would break. And then if a jackpot went up, you'd radio, call somebody to jackpot.
Are we allowed to ask what year this was?
Yeah, so sure. I started out in 1994, dealing cards the year I got married. And, um, and so from '94 and then in '90, so I worked at Slots. And, and did that for a while. And this is when you pay jackpots. You, you know, they used to have hoppers. This is for cash-in, cash-out, ticklers. And you had hoppers, hopper jams and slot cheats who would come in with slugs. And they would come in and, and, and try to cheat the system, which is pretty interesting. When you open up a bank and you see a bunch of slugs in the hopper, you see that, and it-
What? Slug?
Yeah, I'm kinda, yeah, I'm kinda, what's a slug?
And a hopper?
So people would recreate, you have a dollar, a dollar token.
Okay.
Okay. And imagine somebody recreating, take a steel and recreating a dollar token.
Like a fake.
Like a fake token. The weight would be the same. Cause when you put a dollar token into the machine, it would have another dollar that was there. And for a millisecond, it would compare the two.
Right.
If it matched up, then it would go down into the hopper and you would get a credit.
Wow.
And so what some people would do, you see slot cheats that would come in. They would take a lot of different things that have slugs and then they would play the machine until the machine jammed up. Once slug didn't work, it jammed. Then it would go to another machine. Or sometimes they would take like a, um, a string or a floss or something and they would put it on the slug that worked and they would can, put it in, pull it out, pull it in, pull it out.
Don't you remember we had the guy come to the dinner series at Oscar? That was the slot cheat?
Yeah.
And he, he talked about how he did all of these scams and now you can't do it anymore.
Yeah, you can't do it anymore. It's ticket in, ticket out. I mean, it's, it's cashless, which is, which is, that changed the entire industry. I remember when that technology came about, actually. And we were, I was working at Barley's and we were doing testing of it there and at the wildfire. And I was sort of in charge of the, as a marketing guy, of that system. We were testing two systems, uh, Bally system and IGT system for the company to go company-wide with, um, one, one card system as well as cashier systems. And, and that was a big deal when that, when that came about. But I did that for a while, worked as a casino host for a while. Worked in the front desk reservations, worked in human resources in the casino industry. Then I ended up going to Kansas City in Missouri, opened up two properties for them. And Kansas City as the director of player development, came back, worked in sales. At Sunset Station, when it opened up, became the director of casino marketing. Sunset Station, went over to Palace Station as the director of marketing. Left Palace Station, went to Sunset Station as director of marketing. Then I left the company after 10 years.
You've done everything in a-
I think, I think a prerequisite to becoming mayor should be dealer school. I tell you what, you have to go to dealer school if you wanna be the mayor of Las Vegas.
I tell you what, look, that feeling of, you know, it's so funny. When you're, when you're dealing and it's 4 o'clock in the morning and you're in a dead game and you're standing there going, oh my God, if I could just get one person on my game. And then somebody shows up and, and, and they're playing $2 a hand. We call it, you know, shell and silver, like you chucking out silver. You go, oh my God, why is this person here 4 o'clock in the morning and I'm dealing $2 blackjack, right? But it was, the excitement of the industry, it took, when I got out of the industry as a whole, the hotel gaming and hospitality industry, a lot left. And it took a long time to get out of my system. Jonathan, you know, when you walk through your property.
Yeah.
You see things and you're looking at things a different perspective.
Never stops.
Yeah, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And then when you're walking through the pit and you see players and you walk back and you, and you go through the system, see the players, what's going on with them, what have you. When you're in the restaurants, I mean, look, we've got callouts. We've had callouts where, um, we've had to go turn over hotel rooms, right? So I worked as a GRA. We had callouts where you had to go to-
That's Gary's World.
Yeah, you know what I mean? Yeah, you know, you get callouts and you gotta, somebody's gotta turn the room over. So they were like, look, um, come, come on, we gotta go turn over rooms. Or I've, we callouts at the, at the buffet of the restaurant where you actually had to, you know, bus tables and do those.
Right. So, um, so at Palace, at Stations, you were doing, you were the director of marketing. Obviously today, you're not in marketing, but how do you see the industry?
You're sort of marketing yourself to-
You're marketing yourself, yeah.
Yeah.
Come here.
How do you think the industry's changed in traditional marketing versus sort of today?
Yeah, well, look, um, my advertising agency, we do a lot of gaming work around the country. And, you know, it used to be you drove revenue through database and through direct mail, right? Direct mail was your, was your, was your driver of business, right? People wanted to come in and they had their coupons and they wanted, they had a joke that, you know, a slot player would come to the opener of an envelope if you sent it to them. And, um, you know, they had to have their tickets and their coupons and they're coming in. So that managing that database was hugely important. Database marketing is extremely important as well, but a lot of it is electronic. Some people still want to have the coupon, but the coupon is irrelevant. You come in, you put your player card in, um, your, your reward, whether it's free play, is automatically on your machine. Everything is automatic and, and it's a different philosophy. A lot of cost savings associated with that?
Should, should people do away with, uh, coupons? Hotmail, physical mail?
Well, I think it, it's not up to you or you, it's up to your players, right?
Players, should we do away with the physical?
Yeah, yeah. That's a, that's a, that's a great question, right? And the players will tell you, right? They, some people who are old school, they still wanna come in. They still wanna have their paper. They wanna have their coupons. You walk into their, you know, homes and they have the coupon set up for drawings on Friday night. They still need a ticket, even though you could do the whole thing automated based off your player's card, right? You do an automated random generator, number pops up. People still want you to come in, take your ticket, go into the bin, pull out the ticket and call the number. And, and so, uh, that has changed and it's been a learning curve. I think ticket in, ticket out, cashless has changed a lot. Some people still like to hear, even though when you cash at your ticket and do the jingle. Right?
Yeah.
The jingle is not quite the same as, uh, you know, having the coins come out, hit the, hit the bucket. You know, you see people who still wanna pull the machine.
Mm-hmm, pull the arm, yeah.
Pull the arm, right? And so they could still do max five credits or whatever it is and they would go by the business, but they still pull it every single time.
Do they call it here the one-armed bandit? Or is that just an English thing?
No, they called it a one-armed warm on bandit. That's how it started, sure. We got it out.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Yeah. And, and so I, I think that the industry, to its credit, has gotten a lot more technologically advanced, um, which is, which is a good thing because that leads to, to the future. And that's the future of our society. But you kinda do get away from just a sort of old school mentality, comping policy. You know what's different?
Yeah.
Also, and, um, and I haven't been in the business for a long time, but I remember going from handwritten comps to all electronic comps.
Wow.
Right? That was a huge thing. And then giving certain individuals the autonomy to issue a comp. Right? Because if you're a player and now you go back to the system, hey, can I get a comp to the coffee shop for two? Well, they go back, you look at your players' club, you look at the number, okay, you know.
Or you just swipe it on your card and you do it, right?
Yeah, right. You swipe it on your card. Well, that's if you have the points available.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Now, if you are, you know, who, who's able to override the system to issue these comps for people who don't quite have it, um, you know, working with your host on your checkout. And, you know, it used to be you would, you know, you'd bring somebody in and you had different levels, you know, room, food and beverage, up to whatever, but you probably should have it, I'm sure. But there was a lot of leeway and the host had a lot of leeway checking out on a Sunday that may not quite be there as much as it used to be. Now, look-
Tell me about it.
You know, yeah. You know, look, but also there was a lot of abuse, right?
That's right.
You know, we, I remember seeing people from, who were selling comps in the, in the middle of the pit. It's on surveillance. Guy comes up, shake your hand, give you 20 bucks, you give him a $50 comp. And so there was a lot of abuse that went into that. And if a person that was overseeing the players' club and that oversaw casino marketing, player development, you know, you would see the report that come through of how many overrides and who got what and et cetera. And so you, I get it.
Yeah, now you can see that all.
Now you can see it all.
But in the old days, it was just handwritten and there was no tracking.
No doubt about it. You would wait.
It was happening way before, yeah.
Yeah, you would wait until finance would send you your report, whether that was every two weeks or at the month, and you would go through it. And then you see who comped what and, you know, then you, you, I literally take a piece of paper and send it over to the host and say, you know, why was this so much? And they would get back to you and get a comp exception report, et cetera. So-
Does that still happen?
Comp exception reports? Yeah, but now it's daily and it's automated.
Yes, daily, automated. Yeah, he could, you know, you could pull it up right now of who, what, when and where, who's, who's doing it, which, which I said, which is better and, you know.
But you still wanna give independence to your hosts and to your management team to be able to make good decisions and take care of customers. The question is, is somebody, and it's not happening at the Plaza because we got the best team in the world, but is it happening where somebody's giving someone, you know, a hundred dollar bill and saying, give me a free room or whatever it may be?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I-
Yeah.
That, that stuff, I'm sure happens up and down.
Yeah, it, well, I'm sure it does, right? Um, and it's just, it's not just here. It's, if you go to PT's Bar, right, and it's a bartender who has ability to comp your drinks and et cetera. It's cause it's just sort of our industry in general, right? There's a lot of leakage that goes into it. Um, you know, you do your best to maintain it and you do your best to control it without compromising the customers. Because look, the customers, um, if they are contributing and they are, you know, loyal customers, then they do reserve.
So, so you mentioned obviously Stations and you were the director there. How, how was it to work at Stations as a company? What was the leadership like? Did you get to interact with them a lot and get good direction from them?
Oh, yeah.
You've shared some stories in the podcast.
Yeah, yeah. You know, look, um, I always say this, I don't, if, if I ran Station Casinos and if I were Frank Lorenzo Fertitta, would I do anything different? And, and being a small business owner now and being accountable for team members and dollars and resources, et cetera, I learned a lot about, um, you know, keeping track of your dollars. You know, every, when I was there, we would go to meet with the corporate office every month and we would defend our P and L. And so, yes, I interacted with them every month. And the corporate office used to be at Palace Station and I was the director of marketing. And so they would come down and they'd go to lunch at the coffee shop. And the COO, the CEO, uh, the chairman, the vice chairman would be in the building every single day at, at my property. And they were, yeah, yeah, you know, yeah. It's like, it's like the yin and yang because, uh, they were there every day and they would see things every day, whether, and if, and if you were at Boulder, they weren't there every day. If you were at Sunset, they weren't there every day. But at Palace, you were there every single day.
This is before they put the headquarters-
Yeah, headquarters Red Rock, right, right. But, you know, look, um, it, it teaches you to be on top of your game, right? It wasn't as though they were calling out things that didn't need to be called out. And if your game is in order, then you're gonna be good. If you knew your numbers, you're gonna be good. If you could defend what went on, you're gonna be good. If you didn't, you're gonna have a tough time. You know, and also the, the company was great about giving people an opportunity to go into a position where you might not be quite as ready for, right? So if I was the director of marketing and they saw the talents that were within me that allowed me to be a good leader, then next thing you know, I could transfer over and be the director of hotel. And, you know, because those skill sets transfer over. You could learn to do the business, but the things you can't teach, if you saw and said, I knew they were good about saying, okay, you're going to go, we're going to ask you to go do this, which I, which I thought was good.
So how are you going to use your, you know, your background in casino marketing and some of the, you know, the, the things that you've done in marketing in your campaign?
Yeah. You know, it's important for me, I, I operate like I, pretty much like I do running a, a property or an industry, right? I don't believe in taking good resources and putting them towards bad initiatives, right? So for instance, for homelessness as an example, you know, instead of when I got in, instead of saying, hey, let's do all these things, I went around the country and looked at homelessness. We went from Los Angeles, San Francisco, Phoenix, Seattle, Denver, Miami, San Antonio, looking at best practices and seeing what's working and bringing them back into our community instead of just flying off the cuff. And we created.
This might be controversial, but surely you didn't learn best practices in San Francisco or Los Angeles?
Well, there are some. The challenge is, yeah, 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 believe me, there are some. I mean, I walked Skid Row with the lieutenant for, you know, city of LA, LAPD has a task force for Skid Row. The LAPD's Skid Row Task Force, which has 66 offices that work 24 hours a day of mitigating 0.6 square miles in downtown LA. That's all they do. And so also look at what not to do is important.
That's true.
Right? Learning that and for going through the process, I learned a lot from the industry as well from of what, of what I don't want to do. No one's perfect and everyone's made a lot of mistakes over the course of time. You learn from your mistakes and you, which is also just as valuable. And so seeing what was going on and then coming back and saying, okay, we do not want to be this. What do we have to do not to be this? Where do we have to go? And for the redevelopment in my ward of the historic West Side, the historic West Side where I live and grew up was an area, is, is an area town where black people could only live. And they could only shop in the stores, go to restaurants, go and live in, in the historic West Side before 1960 with the desegregation of the strip, with the signing of the Moulin Rouge Agreement, which integrated the hotels. And so how do we, how do we revitalize our community? Well, instead of just saying, government's created a one ounce, right? If, if, if you had a property, and we're going to use our analogy of a property, and you said, I'm going to go build four, 500 hotel rooms and you build them and you go, okay, that's cool. Now what? Well, why don't we build a restaurant around it? Okay, well, that's cool too. Maybe we should create a parking garage. Okay, that's great too. It's like one ounce. I don't believe in, in that. I believe in strategic initiatives, understanding where you're going to master planning. And we did that in the historic West Side. We created what's called the, the Hundred Plan in Action, which stands for Historic Urban Neighborhood Design Redevelopment. And it's a plan in action, which lays out strategically of exactly how we're going to revitalize the community. We went out two years to the community to talk about what do you want to see? We came out again for another year and created the plan in action. And we're actually executing on that. And so we are not just loosey goosey governing and building up, rebuilding our community. We have strategic initiatives that are out there, you know, whether it's addressing food insecurity, workforce development, homelessness, the healthcare disparity that's in there, arts and crafts, arts and, arts and resources, cultural resources, all of that is within the plan and we're executing on it with a number of initiatives.
So, so you said you're, you're raising money to get your message out there. This is, this is free. You've got millions of listeners here.
Yep.
What, what is that message? Is the message as to master plan the city better?
Yeah.
Solved for homelessness? You said less.
What are your initiatives for running for mayor?
Well, look, you can find out a lot. You go to Cedric Creer, C E D R I C, Cedric Creer, C R E A R dot com. And go to our website, you can see a lot of different things we have going on. One, we have to continue to keep people safe. Public safety is hugely important in our community. We have to work across jurisdictions to address a lot of the issues facing our, our Southern Nevada community with the county, with the city of Hennessy and North Las Vegas and Las Vegas, working together to mitigate homelessness, to address the mental illness crisis that's facing our community. If you look at what we're doing in the historic West Side and the progress that we've made and are making, I say that we're moving at government lightning speed. There's a number of initiatives that we need to have other initiatives, downtown Las Vegas and Fremont Street and what's going on here in the core of how do we continue to develop and work with our partners to build up this tourist district that gets 22 plus million people a year that comes on here? Our health district is vitally important to, to build out. When I was on the Board of Regents, you know, I was one of the people that worked to bring University School of Medicine into Southern Nevada. We only had University of Nevada Reno, yes, how about that? We only had University of Nevada Reno. And they had their mission of two years in Vegas, two years in Reno, but they weren't satisfying the need of addressing the healthcare disparity in Southern Nevada. In 2006, Governor Kenny Gwynn commissioned a study of, headed up by Don Snyder, who used to be the head of Fremont Street Experience. And.
And the main fundraising for the Smith Center.
Yeah, which, you know, I was, I was the, one of the founding board Minnesota Smith Center. So I had a chance to work with Don in Myron on, on building that facility, which is, which is a highlight of Symphony Park, along with World Market Center and others.
Don't forget them and the residential, the 800 apartments.
Yeah.
But it's a, it's a highlight of all of downtown.
It is, it is, it is. You know, it's the first performing arts center in the state. But this report talked about the disparity of healthcare in Southern Nevada, in Nevada in general. We ranked 40th to 49th in number of physicians per 100,000 residents. We ranked 40th to 49th in number of nurses. Our licensure rate for physicians was a lot more stringent than it was in others, which would keep physicians from cutting into Nevada. And then we didn't have enough, what you call GME, graduate medical education, where people come in, do their residencies. And we didn't offer that a lot. The medical school at the time only graduated about 50 students a year. And then a lot of those students, when they go to get their match, they were, let's say you wanted to match in orthopedics. Well, we didn't offer orthopedics as a graduate medical education here, so they would go out of the state. When you go out of the state to do your residency, you're more likely to stay where you're moving, you're doing your residency, you're getting paid, your family's there. For you to come back is a big effort. And so we need to expand GME. That has taken place since 2006, when this report came out. With the bifurcation of University of Nevada Reno and the medical school here dedicated solely towards Southern Nevada for the most part adds a lot. Because one, it brings a lot of ancillary businesses and industry from the healthcare industry into it. And I have to give Councilman Brian Knutson, who oversees Ward One, big kudos because he's done an amazing job of bringing the health community together and really building out a health district. We have a long way to go, but we're, we're, we're making great starts.
He's a great guy.
Yeah.
You, you have a great city council. And, and I don't think a lot of people know this, but Cedric, as city councilman Ward Five, actually oversees the Plaza. The Plaza is in his ward.
Best ward.
It is. Look, I say it is the best ward, right? My ward is half of downtown. The Plaza is one of them, is our, our highlight. And I have to say, you all have been an amazing partner as well. I, I, you, you have taken a property that needed a lot of love and care and attention and you've done that. And Jonathan, I got to tell you with your leadership, you've really done that. And you're, you're constantly trying to find ways to improve the property and in turn improve downtown and the experience that's taken place.
Thank you.
And it's more than just coming in here, sitting down, putting your money in a slot machine. You've created an experience that is taking place and it's only growing with the expansion that's taken place with the amount of density we're bringing in for.
The rodeo.
So Cedric approved, he was very much influential in pushing me to get rid of Greyhound. Not get rid of Greyhound, but to relocate Greyhound. Although I go, I'm, I'm, I can say whatever I want, you have to be a bit more diplomatic. But Greyhound needed to leave and, and that's why I got a key to the city from, for, for that. And then Cedric was instrumental in approving the rodeo arena out there and allowing us to do that because I don't know any other city in the world where you can just put a rodeo arena in the middle of the downtown.
And it's right outside your office.
I see.
Don't say that. No, 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 let's not talk about that.
Just kidding, just kidding.
It is.
Every morning he wakes up, he sees that rodeo.
I do, I do, I do. But you know, I tell you, one of the reasons why it's, it's easy to support is because I see you trying to do stuff and I see you trying to improve downtown and I, and I have a lot of faith that you're going to take. You, you guys have a lot of land. Are you the largest land owner in downtown Las Vegas?
No, not anymore. We were, but it is the largest single contiguous parcel.
Good contiguous parcel, right? Right, right. And so if you look at from the, the Porte de Cachere coming through to the garage, to the parking lot, through the, all the way up to our parking garage, that's a lot of landmass of things you can do. And I, and I think that, at least I believe that if you had your way, you, you got a master plan of what you want to do with that.
I was about to say, we like what your vision is for the city. Our vision for that whole site is to master plan it. You can't piecemeal it. So the rodeo arena was a temporary thing. We always agreed on that and it was a great way to activate that land and to bring life down there, especially during the 10 days of the NFR. But long term, we, we're master planning that, we're working on that as we speak.
So that's why you're taking your time with Greyhound and what's going to go in that space?
Exactly. Because you can't just do something in Greyhound unless you think about that next.
Yeah, makes sense.
10 acres, it's all intertwined. You have to master plan it. The same way you talk about the city, we talk about that 17 acres.
No doubt about it.
Our 17 acres is that city.
And look, if you, and I tell businesses or industry that wants to come into the downtown quarter, you really need to understand everything that's going on in downtown to make an educated decision of what you want to do. If you look at Symphony Park with the opening of the Expo Center, 325,000 square feet that World Market Center is opening, they opened during COVID, so it was sort of sporadic what's going on. But I could see over the next year or two, the, the activation of many different events that are taking place there, right? And that's going to affect you in your, in your occupancies with the walkway, the pedestrian walkway coming over, with the Oric and Park Haven, which are open now, our apartment complexes. We approved another one that's coming in right on Grand Central. There's going to be 21 stories and another one, five stories, that's going to happen. Went into a MOU with another organization to develop another parcel that's there. Like Symphony Park is really expanding. I really wish it was bigger because we could do so many more things. But that's going to directly affect what's going on across the track at the Plaza and carry it over into Fremont Street and everything else. So you need to understand that and tie, how do you tie all that into it?
Exactly right.
Have you two ever played tennis together?
We have not.
Or pickleball?
We have not. You know what? You know, it's interesting, the pickleball courts there are huge and you guys got a big tournament coming up.
We do, yeah, yeah. End of September, we have the Las Vegas Pickleball Open. It's, it's going to be more amateurs this year. The, the professional, the problem is, to be honest with you, is it's become so popular that there's so much money behind it now that all of the best players are now under contract. So when we started this out four years ago, we got all the best players. Because nobody cared. We were the only place. Now they're all under contract, so we can't get them anymore like we used to. We have to now step up our game and get into the, the big leagues, so to speak. But that's why this year there's not going to be any professionals or pros, shall we say? But we're very good amateurs and clinics and all of that. But yeah, to, to compete in the big leagues, you need to go to the, the tours and the much bigger, the big, the bigger groups.
It's like the thing and we've been talking about, I know Councilman Anthony was big on getting pickleball courts.
Yeah, he was ahead of the curve.
He was out of curve. I gave him, I give him credit. And now everybody's looking to, to get pickleball courts that don't have them. In my ward, outside of the Plaza, that's, that's it. And, but it's a, it's a huge growing sport and I need to get out and play because I, I haven't played. I played once.
But you're tennis.
I'm a tennis player.
You'll be good.
Well, you know.
Your scholarship was.
Yeah, and tennis, yeah, I was captain of my team for two years. I won two conference championships.
Well, hold on, hold on. I'm ready to challenge you. This is an official challenge on the podcast.
It, I, I had a, I, it's crazy. I have a, no cartilage in my right knee, right? Which is, which is kind of tough. The last time I played, I could barely walk to my car and I was like, oh my God, this hurts.
Challenges off the table.
And the doctor says to me, she goes, he says, look, you know, your knee hurts when you play tennis, right? And I go, yeah, how's it been the other time? I go, yeah, I can feel it, it's not quite as bad. He goes, well, let me ask, let me ask a guess that you don't play tennis. And so I really haven't picked up a racket, even a ball machine a couple of times. And you kind of, it's not, it's not cool because it's something that I love to do and, you know, I can do it. I can actually play. I can actually play tennis. And so, but I, I don't do it as often, unfortunately. I wish I had a, wish I had a different story to tell you. And I wish I could take it and bring you an offer because I would beat you.
Okay, so what about, what about growing up here in Vegas? How was that? Just to re, to go back a little bit.
Born and raised in Las Vegas was, was awesome. I was in, I was born at UMC, which was Southern Memorial Hospital. You know, my father was a second black doctor in Nevada. And when he came here, you know, population was nothing. And his first office is right next to the Moulin Rouge site. And he was a guy that delivered babies. If you were sick, you had a cold, you'd go see him. If you were pregnant, you'd go see him. If you broke your arm, you'd go see him. If you, I joke, if you needed a note to go back to work the next day because you stayed out too late hanging out, you'd go see my dad. He was their community doctor. And so got a chance to really be around some amazing people and got a chance to see a lot of the characters that you read about in books. Like I, you know, I, I knew them. And from playing tennis, it allowed me to really be around some of these people because we used to get dropped off as the tennis courts. So every hotel had tennis courts, Desert Inn Sands, Tropicana, hacienda, Caesar's Palace.
Plaza.
The Plaza, Plaza, yes. Plaza had tennis courts, yes, without a doubt. And so we used to just get dropped off someplace and we would just hang out there all day. And in the middle of the summer, it's like 120, you would just sit there and you play, you sit there and you play. We would go to the Desert Inn and stay out in the back. Marty Hennessy, who's now the pro.
Marty Hennessy's at Turnberry, yeah?
Yeah, at Turnberry, right? And Marty was my first coach.
He's still there, by the way. He's still playing tennis there every single day.
I know he is.
That guy's timeless.
I remember Marty, you know, had a big left hand and we used to play, he'd say, hey, if you, we'll play a game and if you win, you can get my racket. Okay, cool. Well, Marty would give you a couple of points. The next thing you know, he starts slamming his serves down and he would never win.
You, you ever come across Andre Agassi?
I grew up with Andre and we all grew up playing tennis together and Andre, Phillip.
I'm guessing he was a little bit better.
He was, you know, Andre is interesting. We grew up playing tennis with Andre like every day. Everybody played tennis every day, all right?
For anyone that doesn't know, Andre Agassi is from Las Vegas.
He is from Las Vegas.
Was he born and raised here?
He was, he was, well, born, he was raised here. I'm assuming, I'm, I'm going to assume he was born here. And so we played with Andre every single day and we traveled together on our section, go to Colorado, go to national tournaments. And, and he was always very, very good. When he was 12, 13 years old, he just saw the ball, hit the ball a little bit different than everybody else. Then he went off to Volatieri's and really grew his career and he just, you know, look, he's, he's Andre, one of the greatest tennis players to ever pick up the racket and Grand Slam winner. Great book, yeah, great book, was awesome. And, and was, I, it's funny, you know, in, in that book, I knew a lot of the people in that book and saw a lot of things in that book because we grew up with them, we were there. And so it was great being in Vegas, seeing other characters, seeing, going out to the hotels was a, was like a huge thing, all right? Going to a Sunday brunch where they used to take the showroom, this is before the age of buffets, they'd take a showroom and they would put out food, the chafing dishes, and you would go and you get dressed up and you sit in one of the booths at the hotel and you'd go through the buffet line.
What was the entertainment like back then?
Oh, well.
I mean, we're not talking about that long ago, Cedric, you're not that old.
I know, I know. I do, I do. Look, I remember the Jackson Five being performing at, at Bally's, which was MGM, when Kirk O'Corrion opened it up. I remember seeing a friend of ours knew someone who was in Ann Margaret's band and we did, it was a big night, went to go see Ann Margaret, we saw the Silvers, we'd go to the, you know, you, you would see, how about this? It was interesting about Las Vegas. No concert would route to Las Vegas because there were no venues. And so when I was growing up, the first concert I saw was at the Rotunda at the Las Vegas Convention Center and it was Stray Cats. And I went to this concert and it was real small. And it wasn't until the Thomas Mack was built that concerts started routing there. So you only had really shows in the casinos, right? It was only in the casinos that you would go see shows. And then the Thomas Mack was built, concerts started coming, big boxing matches started coming there, even though the back of Caesar's, they would take and they would take tennis courts and put a boxing matches in there, which was great.
That was the famous scene when the guy parachuted into the box.
Parachuted in, you know, I saw, I saw.
We, we, we had Pat Christensen on the podcast.
Oh, did you?
And we talked a lot about the history of the Rotunda. That was the first concert. Who was the, it was a huge band that played there, I can't remember, he told us.
Yeah.
And then Thomas and Mack up there.
Yeah, and Thomas Mack was building and Pat and Dennis Frinfrock, who's with a wrestling coach at UNLV.
Yeah, he was the one.
Was now running the Thomas and Mack. And Pat and Dennis were running the, the Thomas and Mack. And when it opened up, I mean, I was, I saw Barbra Streisand there, a friend of mine knew, and those tickets were like crazy. I don't know how I ended up going. A friend of mine knew somebody who got, I think the tickets were like a thousand dollars.
Wow.
A pop to go see Barbra Streisand.
That's more than Adele.
Yeah.
That's how much Duran Duran is this week.
Is it really? Duran Duran, yeah. And, and it was crazy and I remember going and I don't know how, I don't remember how we end up getting tickets, but I ended up going, but that was Vegas, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know what I mean? Yeah, yeah, you know.
So, so, so we are running out of time, Cedric.